Order today. Welcome, everyone. Appreciate you being here today. Appreciate your attendance. Feel free to come back to any of our meetings if your schedule allows. We usually meet on the second Tuesday of each month here in the boardroom. So appreciate any time you want to come. You're more than welcome. Ms. Mekus, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Como. Ms. May?
Here.
Mr. Beatty?
Here.
Mr. Hicks?
Here.
Mr. McCoy?
Here.
Mr. Graves?
Here.
Mr. Manley?
Here.
Please stand for the presentation of colors. Our flag presentation will be done by the West Monroe ROTC Junior Cadets. Mr. Debo Gray will lead us in our pledge.
A pledge and to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our invocation will be given by Mr. Grant Edmondson, a student from West Monroe High School.
Let us pray. Dear God, thank you for bringing us here today, Lord. Thank you for this beautiful weather that you've given us. Lord, I pray that as this meeting continues, God, that you'd be at the center, Lord, that these actions would be just for representation of you. God, thank you again for this, the school board and all that they do for us students. A lot of times it gets unnoticed, but God, thank you for all that they do behind the scenes. Again, just bless us in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Board, we need to get an approval of our minutes for the January 19th meeting. Got a motion and a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Jerry, second by Sherry May. All in favor, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed? Motion passes. Board members, we have approval of our agenda. We have several additions, but we'll approve the original agenda first and we'll address the amendments to the agenda. So do we have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I so move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed? Motion passes. Now, we need to include our amendments to the agenda. There were several additions to our agenda today. Item number four, five, six, seven, and nine under the business items section. And under permission to bid, there was item six, seven, and eight. So we'll also need to get a motion and a second to approve these amendments to our agenda.
I so move that we approve the amendments to the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed? Okay. Personnel report, Mr. Geis? Okay. Business, special recognition, Ms. Smee?
Thank you. Mr. Geis could join me. Let him go first.
Thank you. Alain, our first recognition is actually, we're doing this on behalf of Louisiana High School Athletic Association. The LHSAA is a principals organization for the most part, but it's governed by the executive committee. Executive committee is comprised of principals, coaches, athletic directors, and school board members from around the state. And we have been fortunate over the last several years. We have a very honest Jerry Hicks as a member of the executive committee. Mr. Hicks, you'll come on down. It, you know, a lot of times the executive committee gets a bad rap. People want to be on it. I think Mr. Hicks can attest that it's a job. In my time as principal, high school principal in the district, I served on the executive committee for seven years. And so I know the work and time that's put in by Mr. Hicks and the other executive committee members. So on behalf of the LHSAA, we just want to present you with this and say thank you for your service.
All right, don't run off, Mr. Geis. Okay, our second recognition today is very special. For the first time in the history of the awards program for support, outstanding school support employee of the year, which is a program that the State Department does and we send folks every year. We have a state finalist. I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Malcolm Gay. Come on up. We're going to talk about you. Malcolm is a special education para who works with a severely behavioral and academic challenged student. His principal says he cultivates relationships with students through consistent calm composure and helps them build social skills that allow them to function in the classroom and make friends, some for the first time ever. So although he works with one student, or his, his job is to work with one student, he works with all of them by listening to them when they want to share a story or a troubling thought. He's been with us a short time. He actually came in 2022, but he's already become a favorite and an important part of the George Welch Elementary family. So his principal is here as well. We're very proud. He's going to state and we'll find out if he wins at the state level in April.
Thank you.
April the 10th.
Congratulations, Malcolm. Thank you. That concludes our recognition.
Thank you, Alain. The next order of business is item number two, the annual comprehensive financial report for the year ending June the 30th, 2023. Ms. Margie Williamson with Alan Green and Williamson CPAs.
Good afternoon. I'm here, I passed out a summary of audit results earlier. You have your annual comprehensive financial report and single audit report. But I did a summary that I'm going to go over. The first thing is the annual financial report. The independent auditor's report that we issued was an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements. And that is the best opinion that you can get. And the second thing, the financial results. If you turn to page two on the summary, there's a couple of things that I wanted to go over. The first thing is that included in the annual report, there are two sets of financial statements. One is called the government-wide financial statements and the other is the fund financial statements. The government-wide financial statements, that includes all funds of the school board, just included in a single column. And it also includes things like capital assets and debt. There was a couple of things I wanted to go over from that statement. And the first one is that that statement includes your other post-employment benefits liability, which is based on an actuarial study by an actuary that's contracted by the school board. And that liability is over 209 million. And the pension liability, which is the school board's share of the state retirement system pension liability, that is over 216 million. And then the net position is the equity part of the statement. And if you look, you'll see you've got net investment in capital assets, 154 million, some restricted equity, which is for like debt service and grants. And then the unrestricted portion is actually a deficit of 338 million. And that is because in those statements, the OPEB and the pension liability are recorded. So that is what, that's what causes the deficit. And that is no different from any other school board in the state. All school boards, except for maybe one or two, that actually is going to be a deficit. And just to, like the OPEB liability, which is the other post-employment benefits, that is the group health insurance. That, that's the liability for that, for employees who are working now and also for retirees. So the school board actually pays that, just a pay as you go. Like when you get the invoice monthly, you pay them. So just to, you know, give you an idea, in 2023, this, the retiree health insurance was 10 and a half million.
Ma'am? May I?
Uh huh.
So I noticed that in 2019, our unrestricted was 426 million. And since then, it looks like it has reduced, the deficit has reduced to 38 million.
Yes, yes. And
To help me understand, how do I attribute the decrease in the deficit? If I, in layman's terms?
Well, a lot of it depends on what those liabilities are. Your OPEB liability and your pension liability, those are the big liabilities that are on that statement. And like the pension liability, for example, it goes up and down depending on how the investments are doing with the pension funds. So there's a lot of calculations that go into that. So those, and the OPEB liability, those will increase or decrease from year to year. Because you'll see the OPEB liability went from 262 million to 209 million from 2019 till now. And that's kind of based on your workforce. That actuarial study is based on census information that the school board provides to the actuary. And the actuary takes that information and does the, the study to come up with the liability amount. The next fund is the general fund. And these are based on fund financial statements, which these financial statements are what you're used to seeing. They're kind of based on, like your budget. So the general fund, the last, you see, I've given you five years' worth of information. The abhorrent tax for the 2023 year was 25 and a half million. MFP was 119 million. And then all other revenue was 3.6. So for the general fund, you had over 148 million in revenue and you had 152 million in expenditures. The next section there is the transfers. So the general fund gets indirect cost from grants, federal grants, like Title I, special ed. But the big one has been the education stabilization fund. So the education stabilization fund pays the, pays an indirect cost rate of almost 18%, where the other funds, such as Title I and special ed, they pay a little less than 7%. And that is money that those grant funds pay to the general fund for administrative services like accounting. So the education stabilization funds pay a much larger percentage of indirect cost. I just wanted to point that out because those education stabilization funds are coming to an end. I think 2024 will be the last year.
Yes, ma'am.
So where, where you see the general fund has been getting, you see transfer of indirect cost, starting in 2019 was 755,000. So it started to pick up in 2021, 1.7 million. And then in 2022, it was 3.3 and then 3.8 in 2023. So of those transfers, in 2023, that was 2.9 million from ESSR. In 2022, it was 2 and a half million. ESSR, that's the term I just, I use for education stabilization. So you see, for the year, for 2023, it just about broke even, just a loss of 38,000. And the beginning fund balance for the general fund is 22.3. And then the ending fund balance is 22.2. The unassigned fund balance for the general fund, which means that money hasn't been set aside for anything else, is 16.8. So that is actually 11% of expenditures. Okay. The next page, page three, I have the sales tax funds. The first one is the District One M and O Fund. And you see the sales tax, I've got it broken out between sales tax and all other revenue. And most of that other revenue is going to be interest. So you'll see how the sales tax has increased from 2019 to 2023. The actual sales tax in the M and O Fund was 11.2 million. And the expenditures were 10.5. And the expenditures were a little more in 2023 because some of the retiree health insurance was actually paid out of that fund. So that you'll see that it actually still increased for the year about a million dollars. And then the beginning fund balance is 27.7 and the ending is 28.7. But all of that fund balance is actually committed for different things like instructional programs, salaries and benefits, capital improvements, and then mandated cost. The next section is the West Wasatchaw sales tax. Total revenue in that fund was 16.9 and then 3.7 in expenditures. That other financing sources uses that 7 million is actually what's transferred to debt service funds to pay the debt. So the increase for the year was 6 million. Beginning fund balance is 20.1, so the ending fund balance is 26.2. And that is restricted for construction and operations in West Wasatchaw. And then the 68 and the 95 sales taxes I have on the bottom. And those two are restricted for salaries and benefits. So you'll see that total revenue was 35 million, spent 33.9. So there was an increase in that, those funds of a little over a million dollars. And then the beginning fund balance is 12 million and the ending is 13.1. And across the bottom, I gave you what the sales tax revenue, that is sales tax revenue for the past five years. If you notice in 2019, it was 45.6 million. And in 2023, it's 61, a little over 61 million. So over those five years, that's a 34% increase in sales tax. On the next page, on page four, is the school food service. The school food service does get some of the MFP. Food service is fees for meals. And then the federal, 11.3. And so their total revenue is 13.3 and their expenditures were 12.3. So still, they had an increase for the year of a little over a million dollars. Their beginning fund balance is 11.5 and the ending is 12.6. Now, included in that ending fund balance, there is an amount that is set aside for equipment reserve. And I gave you the amount for that. That's a little over 7 million. And the last section is the federal revenue. You can see from 2019 to 2023, the federal revenue has increased from 22.6 to 49.1 million. And that's almost all due to education stabilization funds. The education stabilization for 2023 was 22 and a half million.
So, and that began in 2021?
Mm-hmm.
That education stabilization fund is another name for ESSR, is that right?
Yes, yes. If you go back to page one.
Ma'am, I, I just had, on the federal revenue, the total, that's 49. But the ending fund balance? That's not the ending fund balance, is it?
For, for, under the federal revenue section? No, that's just the tot, the, the grants, you know, the grants over the years. If you go back to page one, you also have a single audit report. We do a financial and a compliance audit. And the federal programs that we audited this year were the special ed programs, which is IDEA and preschool, the education stabilization or ESSR, and Title I. Our opinions on those programs were unmodified, which is a clean opinion. And we had no findings to report.
Awesome, awesome.
Thank you, Ms. Williamson. We appreciate your report.
Mr. Manley, if you'd give me a couple seconds. Just want to thank Ms. Williamson and their group with Alan Green and Williamson. This is almost a year-round task every year, so. And certainly want to thank Regina and her staff. They put a lot of work. But I guess also our entire district. We take a lot of pride in our audits and trying to make sure that we're very meaningful in how we spend our money and doing the things the right way. So thank you for your hard work. Regina, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that?
I would just add that this is not something that, we don't, we don't get an audit report with no findings from my department doing what they're supposed to do. This is every department, every school, every person, every job that's within our system making an effort to do what's right and to, to do what we're required to do with the grants and the, the money that's entrusted to us. So I would say this is a system accomplishment, for sure.
Mr. Manley, may I? Yeah, go ahead here. I also want to just thank superintendent, the staff, and every person that works in this district for the job that you do. I know we get a lot of criticism about a lot of things, but the proof is in the pudding. And obviously, in light of some things that we know that we, we've been hearing about, I mean, this is just awesome to have this type of, of report concerning our finances. Want to thank you all for making the board look good. Thank you all.
Okay, we need a motion and a second to approve the annual comprehensive financial report for the year ending June the 30th, 2023? Mr. Manley, I so move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion concerning the report by the board? Okay, all in favor, indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number three, financial report for December 31st, 2023. Ms. Mekus.
Good afternoon, board. You have in your packet a financial report for the period ending December 31st, 2023. This is the halfway mark in our fiscal year. So keeping that in mind, we'll look at the ending fund balance for the general fund. On the first page, first column is 26.7 million. That's 126% of where we were at this time last year. That's, that's mainly contributed to a couple of revenues that we have received into the general fund that will pay out later in the year. One being half of the state stipend pay for our employees that came from the state last fall. And as you know, we had, we had adopted a resolution to pay half of that in the fall and half of that in the spring. So we are holding that in our fund balance, so it, it is elevated a little bit, but that will pay out in the month of March. If you look at the second column, District One M and O, we're looking at ending that period with 28 million in fund balance. And that is right at 100% of where we were this time last year. So comparison, our two main funds, based on where we are in our budget year, where we are in our fiscal year, we're right on target for the budget that we had adopted back in September of 2023 for the 2024 year. So Margie had gone over our sales taxes. We just continue to see those trends go through the current year. You'll see on the first page, our sales tax revenues for 1968, which is the 13th check, at 4.7 million. That's halfway through the year. 1995 sales tax, the, the revenue halfway through the year, which is our 14th check, is 7.3 million. And the West Wasatchaw sales tax is 6.2 million. And those are revenue numbers as we are halfway through the year, which is, is really all in line with where we projected in our original budget. Of course, if you look on the last two pages, that gives our general fund and our M and O, three years' worth of data to give you a little bit more and compares it to the percentage of change from where we were this time last year. Also gives you a percentage of change from where we are in our projected fund balance in our budget. If you'll notice, next to the last page, under general fund, revenue and other sources, we're at 46% considering we're 50% through the year. I would say we're right on target with our revenues. And if you look at the M and O, second to the last page, at the bottom half of the page, we're at 35% of where we are, where we're budgeted to be for the year. But remember, sales taxes have a little bit of timing difference. So 35% is right where we should be on that. So you want to have any questions on the financials?
Okay, we need a motion and a second to approve the financial report presented by Ms. Mekus.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion by the board? Okay, all in favor of approving the motion? Indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, next item is consider resolution for retention and recruitment salary supplement for the 2023, 2023 to 2024 fiscal year. Ms. Mekus?
So if you'll remember, last fall, we adopted a resolution that covered a one-time stipend to our employees for the 23, 24 year with the first half to be distributed in October, right before we got out for fall break, the second half to be distributed in March, right before we get out for spring break. And we also adopted a supplement for our employees and our long-term substitutes to be distributed in the fall. We did not, in the fall, adopt a resolution for the spring on the ESSR funds, just because some of those funds were unknown at the time. We get additional allotments. There could be funds that maybe we couldn't spend because of the time restrictions. So we held off on adopting the ESSR portion of the stipend until the spring. But now I have this resolution. It is for our permanent employees, let's say to all permanent employees whose employment whose employment has been presented to the Washita Superior School Board in an open meeting. PRN school nurses, long-term substitute teachers filling a full-time position at the same school for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, and long-term substitute support workers filling a full-time position at the same school for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, who were employed on March first, twenty twenty-four, the measurement date, receive a one-time across-the-board salary supplement of five hundred dollars. This is the same wording, the same, uh, principle that we've used in the last, uh, three supplements that we did with ESER to include the long-term subs. Uh, this is just one that covers the March twenty-second distribution.
Looks like this will impact twenty-seven hundred employees, is that right?
Yes, sir.
The five hundred dollars per employee?
Yes, sir.
And it will go along with the second half of the state's stipend, just to be clear, sir. They will be getting more than the five hundred dollars.
Right. So with it being the Friday before we get out for spring break, it did conflict a little bit with payday. So, um, payday is scheduled to be on that Friday also. We'll move payday to Thursday to, to get this out and not have a conflict and confusion with dates in our payroll system. Uh, but I don't think anybody will object to, to payday being a day early.
Ms., Ms. Casey?
You got a clap over here.
So it looks like they'll be distributed on March twenty-second?
March twenty-second, which is the Friday we get out for, um, spring break.
As you said, this is a combination, a construct with the state's supplement.
So the state, uh, led, the legislature, at the last regular session, voted a one-time stipend for certified in-support workers in the state. So we divided that in half, gave half of it, along with the ESER check, right before fall break. We're doing the same thing, the second half of that stipend and this additional ESER check.
Okay.
Ahead of spring break.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, need a motion in a second to approve the, uh, resolution for retention and recruitment salary supplement outlined by Ms. Mekus?
I also move that we approve the resolution for retention and recruitment salary supplement.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on the subject? Okay, all in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed, motion passes. Item number five, consider and select engineer for parking lot at Drew Elementary, Ms. May?
Uh, yes, so I would like to, uh, recommend that we use lasbien associates for this.
That a motion?
Do we need to, I need to make that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, it'd be a motion and need a second.
All right. So I'd like to put that in the form of a motion. Who seconded it?
Second.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, uh, to, uh, use lasbien associates for the Drew Parking Lot. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by, by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed, motion passes. Item number six, consider and select engineer for parking lot at Woodlong Junior High and Woodlong Elementary, Mr. Beatty?
I'd like to make a motion. We use lasbien associates for that. Uh, so I make that in form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for lasbien associates for Woodlong Junior High and Woodlong Elementary. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed, motion passes. Item number seven, consider and select engineer for parking lot at Lakeshore Elementary, Mr. Dabo Gray.
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to use lasbien associates.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for lasbien associates as the engineer for Lakeshore Elementary. Uh, any, any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed, motion carries. Uh, item number eight, policy consideration approval, Ms. Carrie Ferguson.
Good evening or afternoon. Um, we are asking that you consider the policies. These policies were discussed by the Policy Review Committee on January the eighth. They were recommended for board consideration at the January nineteenth board meeting and are now being presented for your approval. There are eight total policies and we are asking for your approval at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. We have, uh, uh, Ms. Caitlin Ross would like to speak, uh, regarding this matter from the public perspective. Would you like to come to the podium and address it? Okay, you've got three minutes.
There's eight different policies. Policy CG, administrative records. Policy DFG, gifts and donations. Policy EBBH, use of automated defibrillator and cardiac emergency plan. Policy GBG, employee probation. Policy IHAD, parent conferences. Policy JGC, student health services. Policy EBCB, video, audio monitoring of school board property. And policy JCDAE, student use of cell phones and other electronic telecommunications devices.
Sorry, that last one, um, you're, it's requesting a change for that, and I would like to recommend that y'all, we do not change that. Um, we actually just had an incident at Woodlong with, with this, and, um, I don't think that we should move forward with that. It's, um, it allows kids that are bullying other kids by use of a cellphone to get away with it. They're being punished because it's not the policy. And so we just had, um, and something to do with that, and it would allow these kids that are bullying kids just to not be punished. And so that's, that's what I would.
The policy is, um, was the recommendation of forethought that the specific discipline consequences not be in board policy, but in discipline policy instead. There will still be a cellphone policy. It just will not be part of board policy. It'll be discipline policy.
Okay, so I thought it said under, uh, discipline handbook, which would be different than a, than a policy, which to me one would mean that you, you have to go by and others that guidance, uh, you know, guidance to go by. Is that correct, or?
The policy, uh, all this is doing is changing and removing the consequences out of Wash, out of the policy here and, and following the guidelines as directed by our discipline manual procedure that our administrators go by. Mr. Lloyd's here. Rodney, is there anything you want to add to that?
It allows us to, the discipline procedure manual that we follow, we meet on it twice a year. So it allows us to make adjustments to it, uh, each year. We put it actually in the, uh, procedure manual. Well, what we have done, we've actually just made some things be more aligned. For example, elementary, they were picking up the cell phones maybe at three-thirty. We have middle school and high school, they're picking up the phone at three or four. So every school is now going to be picking up the phones at three o'clock. Yeah, because it's, it's more consistency that we brought to it instead of, uh, trying to make fun of kids. We're not doing anything. Yeah, so it, it mentions in the old policy, it says, uh, go to CCWA. But now they say what happened when we put CCWA. So we just made some things more consistent, more clear, and he shared with the team, look at it.
Regarding the kids also that are using it to bully and not just, you know, that.
We didn't even look at it from that perspective. We just tried to get some things aligned up and trying to get some things more consistent because we've got thirty-seven schools and some of them are all, they're all different.
I hope it just aligns more with distributed than mine and not something else.
Okay. Uh, any other discussions on this from the board? Okay, I need a motion and a second to approve the policy consideration that was just, uh, discussed by Ms. Ferguson.
I also move that we approve the polit, policy consideration and approval. Uh, and with their names, she called those out, so that's good.
Second.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the policy that's presented. Any other discussion? All in favor indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay, item number nine, bid change request thirty-nine twenty-four for playground equipment to forty-one, forty-two playground equipment. Jared Peter.
Good afternoon, Board members. Uh, I'd like to request we change the bid number for playground equipment from forty-nine twenty-four uh, to forty-one twenty-four. Uh, this project's been changed from a public works project to, uh, materials and supplies.
So, so you're saying initially when we bid at last, for?
Right.
We had it.
We had it as a public works. Right.
Okay, need a motion in a second to approve the, uh, bid change request presented by Mr. Peters?
Sir?
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion by the board regarding this matter? Okay, all in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed, motion passes. Item number ten, construction and renovation projects, Mr. Stephen Hefield.
Good afternoon, Board. You should have a handout, uh, listing all the, um, things we got going on throughout the parish. First one we have is TBA, uh, architect, uh, started in elementary. We were able to get slab poured in last week for the classrooms. Real busy out there trying to get the, uh, material in for the blocks and so forth. Uh, West Washita, a lot of the site work still being done. The sewer's been installed. And, uh, we got a construction meeting this Thursday at West Washita, so that would be at, I think it's at ten o'clock. But I sent out a reminder.
Yeah.
Uh, security, security upgrades, we're, if y'all been to your school with the man traps, there's a graphic that goes on the wall that we've had a little trouble getting in. Uh, but they assured us that, uh, it should be in on February the nineteenth, and we'll have those graphics put in, and then we're still working through some punchless items on those. The generator for child nutrition, that has been pushed back for four of twenty-four. So I think we were going to get it in February. Now it's been pushed back to April, so. That's just one of those items like a killer. You just, you order it and it takes forever to get it in. Uh, Drew Elementary, the roof has been completed, just waiting on, uh, the manufacturer inspection, and then we'll get insurance, uh, warranty issued on that. The pavil, uh, pavilions, uh, uh, was towed by TBA. We got shop drawings in yesterday. The weather has really held this job up, uh, but hopefully through the summer, they'll speed up and get a lot of those done. Starts in high school, a lot of earth, earthwork being done, a lot of demo stuff being done, um.
When did they start that, Stephen? When was that started? When did the earthwork?
It started, uh, noted, when we? Yeah, it's been the last couple of weeks they started that. First of February or end of January, but yeah, they, they working out there. And then we also have a construction meeting at Limmel, pre-construction at Limmel this Friday for that library addition there. Next is Architect Alliance. You'll see those pictures at Washita Junior High of the roof being done. They're about eighty percent complete. I think they like doing the gym area and auditorium area on, on those roofs, so. And I had another handout that was concerning Washita High School that we're still working through some punchless items on the office area and on the, uh, press box, um, area. And, uh, starts the middle school with Rice Gregory. If you look at the highlighted area that I highlighted, uh, we had a construction meeting on February the seventh. All the asphalt's put in on the parking lots and drives, uh, ceiling grid going in, uh, painting being done on the inside, on the classroom wings, and then lights are going to be, uh, starting to be installed. And then, uh, we got a new account set up for Atmos for that job last week after the meeting, so. Uh, again, that job is potentially still, uh, mid-April on completion on that, on that job is what they got.
All the asphalt has been done at the job site. At one time, we talked about maybe holding off on the final coat of asphalt and to cut down on possible damage as a result of the construction going on. Is that still a problem or concern Rice, or we're okay moving forward with the final coat of asphalt?
Uh, we had hoped that that would be that way, that the, uh, final coat would be closer to completion. But the contractor decided he wanted to do it all at one time. And I suppose the, uh, answer to that is because the asphalt contractor was probably going to charge a remobilization fee to bring his equipment back out there again in about four months, so they elected to go ahead and do it all at the same time.
If there's any issues or problems, though?
If there's any issues, they will be corrected before.
Good.
Like I said, I covered Washita High School as far as the press box in the, uh, office area. And then next is, uh, land three architect. If you look at the highlighted area, metal panel, uh, should have been completed last week. Putting up sheet rock, um, working, all the work is inside the building now. Uh, I know we looked at them doing some drainage work, but I, you know, the weather, I don't know that we were able to get that, that job done as far as getting all the storm drains in and all that, so. Uh, it's just, you know, how muddy it is down there. It's, it's terrible, so. Um, the completion date set for that is March twenty-ninth. So hopefully, uh, we'll get better weather and get it moving on quicker, so. And then Richwood Middle School, uh, if you look on the slab, uh, highlighted area, color selection has been made, uh, the building has been ordered for the slab, so, um.
When, when was the building ordered?
Sir?
Do you know when the building was ordered?
Uh, I do know, I don't know when it was ordered. I know we had some color schemes, uh, that man construction had, and he got from you, from, uh, Ms. Brown and you also at the last construction meeting, and that's what he was waiting on. Uh, I think one of the questions he had with Cedric is where they wanted the red or the white, and I think they got that taken care of.
But I think some, uh, I spoke to someone and they made it clear that, uh, that was just for the me, uh, the, the metal, but it's not for the, uh, red iron. That should have already been ordered, right?
Yeah, the red iron, yeah.
So did they say when they?
I don't have a, uh, a date where they ordered that, but I will get with them and I'll let you know when that was ordered, the, the red iron.
Okay, will you do that?
I will.
Uh, on the Robinson job. I know you're going to Robinson now?
Yeah, uh, Robinson, uh, where, uh, which I got it on another sheet here with Lasbien Associates. But I'll mention the, the windows have been completed at, uh, Swayze Elementary. And then Lasbien Associates, uh, the treatment plants, they should be putting those, powering those up on the twentieth of February. Energy be putting in some new power, and they'll tie that in and then, uh, make the swap over for the treatment plants. Robinson Elementary, the parking lot, uh, they started on the field survey. But what we want to do is, with the weather way it's being, is make this a summer project. So this, this, this summer, when the weather gets good, get in there and, uh, knock it on out this summer is the plan.
Okay. Rather than summer, can we just say late spring?
I mean, we can, we can do that, but I know it's.
Late spring is May.
Yeah, yeah.
Late spring is May.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see a problem with that.
We just want it late in school without.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was alluding to. Uh, late spring would be, uh, a school gets out probably around May, uh, whatever. I don't have the calendar here.
I say summertime. I mean, if school lets out, we're going to get started on it.
Yeah, if we can coordinate it with the, the, uh, end of school. Yeah. I don't know what date that is, but it's probably May. The superintendent, what is May what?
May nineteenth.
Tuesday is May twenty-third.
Okay. So if we can get started around May twenty-fourth?
That would be a Friday.
We'll have it all bid out, and there you go by the end of.
Is that a, was that a yes?
It's a yes.
Gotcha.
I'll put a yes on it.
Any more questions?
You don't ever start a job on a Friday.
Thank you, Ms. Taffield. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I got one. The windows at, uh, Swart Upper.
Swart Upper?
Yeah, it is Swart Upper. We done? Swart Elementary? We put new windows in? Are they completing? Yeah, yeah, we fixed all those windows and they're functional and, uh, that's what we did.
All right, any other questions for Ms. Taffield? All right, thank you, Stephen. Appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, evaluation of bids. Bid number one. Mr. Peters.
And board members, uh, for item number one, we have our wide area network internet access R F P thirty-one twenty-four. I would like to recommend the only responsive bidder, uh, Conterra, with a yearly cost of five hundred seventeen thousand one hundred eighty-three dollars and twenty cents. Due to the ninety percent E-rate discount, uh, Washetown Parish will only be responsible for fifty-one thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-two cents.
Okay, have a motion and a second to approve this, this, uh, bid?
I so move.
No, second.
Okay, got a motion and a second, any other discussion? No ma'am, you do not. You have to fill out a comment, comment card. You specifically indicated what you were gonna talk about, so.
Number one on the bid item for internet. Does that not be what this is?
Oh, I'm sure, yeah, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't recognize the, down underneath that.
Yeah.
Yeah, Ms. Ross, uh, you have three minutes to comment on particular item number one.
I would like to bring up a concern, uh, on parents about this. And so with us moving forward, you know, so much in the global society and, uh, coming up, you know, internet is, is a big thing. I love the internet and I love that all the kids should have access to it. But there are things called silent killers that a lot of people are not aware of. And so one of them is, um, the C, uh, R F, R F R exposure. And I've actually sat down with your internet, uh, I T tech, uh, guy. And we had talked about this, um, about any concern that, you know, the internet and things like that could bring. And he wasn't aware, he hadn't ever thought about that. And, um, I presented these forms to him and Mr. Coker, uh, and, uh, nobody ever responded. But there's scientific evidence and actually as a fiduciary, y'all, you know, we all want safe environments for the kids. And so, um, this is something that needs to be addressed. And so, um, I do have some forms that y'all could look at. And so before, you know, we start bidding and putting all these, uh, you know, towers and what, whatever in schools, you know, I think we should look at the other things, like the health issues, lots of kids at the school, uh, you know, it's going downhill. Kids are going downhill, we pay our, how many more nurses? So something's, something's causing that. And these kids, they're getting headaches, they're getting dizzy, they're getting heart palpitations. And, you know, so I.
Is this all, this is all related to internet access?
Yes, there's, I mean, it's there.
Clint, would you like to address that? Have you talked to Ms. Ross about her concerns?
Ms. Nichols and I spoke to her, I, I.
Never heard that.
A year or so. Um, this particular bid has absolutely nothing to do with wireless. There's no, there's no wireless component to this, this bid. This is strictly the, the fiber-based wide area network and fiber-based internet access. So nothing, nothing in this bid has anything to do with wireless, so.
It's not specifically just wireless. I know that you're not aware and, you know, that's why I had sat down with you to, so you could put things over. So you know that it's not just wireless.
I'm not aware of there being any, any way that, that data traveling over a fiber optic network can impact the, the health of, of anyone. So certainly open to reading any information you could provide on that.
So I would like to request maybe that we put this one off. And, um, I have some forms that I can send again to you. Actually, I'll have the company that can send them over themselves. And you could look over them and then we can discuss it at the next meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. Any discussion from the board regarding Ms. Ross's request?
I just have a question, Mr., uh, Manley. Do we have any, anyone here who is aware of, have heard of any of our children becoming sick, ill as a result of internet? Because my grandkids are really be sick.
Ms. Ross, we don't allow any comments on the audience once, uh, your time is up, three minutes.
The, the, Mr. Geis, okay.
No, sir, I've heard no reports of that.
Okay, that's what I need to know.
It's my understanding too that this, this, uh, bid is mainly to get the infrastructure set up for access for all our schools, for internet purposes and for educational purposes. And hopefully we'll have the safeguards in place to address any misuseage or concerns that Ms. Ross is.
This, this bid is, is, uh, is via, uh, E-rate. So we did an R F P. The, the winning bid is the same company that we've had our services with for previous five years. So basically we're, uh, we're actually upgrading our services a little bit, our speed levels to the individual schools and our speed levels to the internet with a net cost of being cheaper than what we previously did pay by the month basis. So that's, that's all this is. I will say that with our timeframe, uh, if this is not approved, if this board meeting, it potentially does jeopardize us being able to be in the windows for the E-rate. And so at that point, we would be responsible for that hundred percent figure and not the ten percent.
So we're just responsible for ten percent now?
That's correct. The, the federal government's E-rate program still isn't operated division gets invoiced directly by the vendor for the ninety percent figure. And our monthly invoice is only that ten percent.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion and a second regarding, uh, bid number one of the, uh, wide area network and internet access as discussed.
Think you may already have it, doesn't it, Sharon?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Graves moves and Ms. May second.
Oh, I'm sorry, Debo. I'm new at the position, Debo. Kinda lost my train of thought here. So we got a motion and a second already. Any other discussions on this issue? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, motion passes. Thank item number two on our evaluation of bids, uh, we're gonna table the timber sale discussion to a later date. Hopefully next month, we'll have that information together and can address that issue then, so. Bid item number three, R F P thirty-five dash twenty-two, access to central, access to control door, West Frontal High School. West Frontal sales tax four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Uh, yes, sir, we've, we've chosen to table that item until a later date as well.
Okay. Okay, item number four on evaluation of bids, copy paper.
So we have our, uh, copy paper bid, um, forty dash twenty-four. In your folders, I included a breakdown of the items I'm recommending we accept from the vendors who have bid on the paper. Now those vendors include Veritiv, Jackson Paper Company, and Economical Genitorial Supply.
Okay, on the paper, copy paper, do I have a motion and a second to approve these bids as outlined by Mr. Peters?
I make the motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the bids. Any other discussion from the board? All in favor signify by saying yes.
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 All opposed, motion passes. Okay, permission to bid. Let's just go ahead and take these individually since they're specific areas, okay? So item number one, forty-two twenty-four, Pine Crest New Canopy, Westside Sales Tax three hundred and fifty dollars, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yes, uh, yeah, so we're requesting, uh, permission to, uh, to bid on that item.
I so move.
Second.
You have a motion and a second for Pine Crest New Canopy, any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number two, forty-three twenty-four, Calhoun Elementary, Breezeway and heating and air conditioning back for the gym. Westside Sales Tax one point two million.
So, yes, sir, again, another permission to bid there.
I make a motion, we give permission to bid.
Not second.
Motion and a second on that. Any other discussion from the board? All in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Crawley Elementary Walk-In Freezer.
Uh, right, so we have a walk-in freezer, um, at Crawley Elementary, um, using the C N P Equipment Funding Source with a budget of forty-five thousand dollars.
Need a motion and a second for the walk-in freezer at Crawley.
So move.
Second.
Yeah, motion and a second for the walk-in freezer at Crawley. Any other discussion by the board? Motion carries. Eh, motion? Any, any other discussion by the board? Okay, all in favor of this signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Drew Renovations Restrooms, Westside Sales Tax.
And we've actually got that, um, F S eight dash twenty-four.
I'm sorry, we should have probably lumped all these together. All right, dump, item number four, Highland Elementary Walk-In Cooler.
Yes, sir, we're using the C N P Equipment Funding Source with a budget of thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Need a motion and a second on.
I so move. I make a motion.
Jerry made the motion, Mike seconded it?
That's right.
You got a motion and a second on that, any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, we're on number five, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Drew Renovation Restrooms, Westside Sales Tax.
Yes, sir, um, that's gonna have a budget of three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars.
Need a motion and a second for the renovations for the Drew Restaurants?
I so move that we approve.
Second.
Any other discussion on it? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, motion passes. Woodlong Junior High, Woodlong Elementary Parking Lot, Westside Sales Tax. Need a motion and a second.
I make a motion that, uh, we use Westside Sales Tax to work at the parking lot of Woodlong Elementary and Junior High.
Not second.
Got a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Drew Elementary Parking Lot, Westside Sales Tax. Need a motion and a second to approve that.
I make a motion that we approve that.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion by the board? All in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Any opposed, motion passes. Lake Shore Parking Lot, East Side Bond money. Need a motion and a second for the Lake Shore Parking Lot.
I make a motion, second.
Got a motion and a second for Lake Shore Parking Lot. Any other discussion? All, all in favor signify by saying yes.
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 All right, all opposed, motion carries. All right, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is President's Report. I guess, uh, the Vice President will jump in here. Do we have a, uh, usually we have a second Tuesday of each month, is this conflicting with?
Yes, the next board meeting will be at Thursday. I don't have it pulled up here. It's, uh, L S B A, y'all will be at conference on that Tuesday, so it'll be Thursday of that week.
March the fourteenth, so our next meeting is March the fourteenth at twelve noon. And of course, uh, as Todd's already indicated, I know we're all final going down to Louisiana School Board, uh, Convention in Baton Rouge, uh, starting that Sunday, so.
Will we, uh, will we continue with our budget and planning for that day as well? On, we had it scheduled for the March fourteenth.
Take that up with the chairman.
Before I think we had it being scheduled for that morning, nine A M.
Okay, Superintendent Report.
Uh, yes, uh, just give you update on cameras in the classrooms, big project we've got going right now. Uh, we are up to twelve schools that have been completely, or excuse me, thirteen schools where cameras have, uh, where the wiring has been done. Eleven schools where the cameras have been hung. We have seven hundred and sixty-one cameras now installed, uh, as we continue the project. We, uh, completed the new Starlinton Middle last week as far as pulling the camera, or the wire, before they close those ceilings up. So trying to get, get ahead of the game. So we're well on, on, uh, our plan. Everything seems to be going fine, we hope it continues to do so. Uh, we do have a three-day weekend coming up, Presidents' Day Weekend is next Monday. Uh, our teachers will return for a P D day on the twentieth. On that same day, some of you may have heard, we will be hosting an area-wide emergency drill at Starlinton High School that our, uh, law enforcement, all of our first responders, area hospitals will be taking in, uh, um, participating in that drill. And this was something that the Fire Department reached out to us and wanted to do. So we're always happy to help out with them. Uh, some great news you may have heard, Drew Elementary was named as a Louisiana Department of Education comeback campus last week. We will be presenting this banner and award to them on, uh, February twenty-first at nine o'clock out at Drew. So we're excited about that, just for their increases, uh, in mastery and decreases in students that were unsatisfactory. So, uh, Finance Committee meets at nine A M. Grant got up and left, I was gonna introduce him, young man that, that, uh, gave the invocation today. He is on, uh, I guess mine, but our student, uh, Superintendent Advisor Council, it's a great group of ten students. Uh, Grant is gonna be in a learning curve segment with me coming up here in a couple of weeks along with Antonio Ford from West Washetown. So if you haven't seen any of our video podcasts, uh, that'll be one of the next ones coming out. I'm excited about it. Great group of kids and, uh, and I guess he had to get back to class, so he wanted to get back. So anyway, that's all I've got, Mr. Manley.
All right, have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting?
I make a move. Second.
All right.